I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Schinholster?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present, so if you will at this time, please stand with me for the prayer and pledge. Loving and eternal Father, we thank you on tonight for your kindness, for your mercy. We thank you for taking care of us as we get up and go to our daily occupations and yet find a restful evening and come back again to do it all over. We thank you for this meeting on tonight. I ask that you continue to be within our minds, that we continue to conduct the business of this city the way you would have us to do. We're so grateful to have Ms. Walden back on the dais tonight, and we're still praying for her husband. We're thankful, Lord God, because we know that each and every person represented in this room means something to this community, and to this community, we mean something to them. And so we thank you for choosing us to be the representatives of your people. As we go into this holiday season, it is my sincere prayer that we learn to love one another more, that we be more kind to each other, and that we have a hope that will change any direction of what we think can't be changed. So it is in your servant's prayer, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we do have some public comments on tonight that have signed up. And so what I'm gonna do is call the person's name. I want you to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. The first person we have listed to speak tonight is Mr. Matt Rosson. So Mr. Rosson, if you will.
Madam Mayor, I have a PowerPoint presentation that I believe Mr. Griffith or Mr. Danuzer is going to put up on the screen.
Okay.
I also have copies that I'd like to distribute, if you don't mind, Hank, in case I don't make it through my three minutes. Just let me know when you're ready.
Thank you.
That's gonna be looking to Hank.
Hank, if you don't mind, I'll just tell you when to advance this slide.
All right, that's fine. All right, great. My name is Matt Rosson. I'm at 248 Swin Avenue. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of Richard Sims. And I'm here to introduce a potential project for which we would like your help. And this is 301 South Wayne Street. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is a building just across from GMC. It's owned by the GMC Foundation. As you can see, it's a very dilapidated building. And GMC bought this lot with the intent of tearing down or moving the building. In fact, Historic Preservation Commission has said that they, at least presently, are not allowed to tear it down because of the house's historic value. However, as you can see, it would require significant investment to restore this house. If you go to the next slide, please. And it's not just the outside, it's the inside, it's the front and the back. Everything bad that could happen to a historic home has happened and is happening to this house. It probably won't survive much longer in its current condition. Please go to the next slide, please. The GMC Foundation approached Richard Sims to see if there's anything he could do to help, and he is willing to consider moving the house to 301 South Liberty Street where he would restore it. However, he's only able to do that economically if he can then rent the house to 10 or more individuals in its new location. And that's what we're here tonight to ask for your help with. If you go to the next slide, please. This is 301 South Liberty Street. We affectionately call it the pit, and it's been a blight on the community for some time. There was a historic home here. It was a multifamily house. It burned down. It was not built within the time necessary to maintain the multifamily use. So as of now, if anyone wanted to build on this large lot, they would be restricted to three unrelated occupants, which doesn't make economic sense to build or move a house for that purpose. But it's a beautiful area. It's in the heart of downtown. It's the heart of historic downtown, and I think we all agree that this is not what we want people seeing when they come to Milledgeville. If you could turn to the next slide, please. This is the house that was in this location before it burned. So as you can see, it was a huge home, and in fact, it had many people living here. It was a multifamily home back before we had the restrictions on multifamily use. So what we're proposing, to move the house from 341 South Wayne to 301 South Liberty, and then allow him to build off of it, keeping it within the period correct appearance, it would not really change the use of the house from what it was before. However, it would need your help because at least as of the current zoning conditions, you would not be allowed to have more than three unrelated people in the home. And that doesn't make sense to move it and to restore it. Next slide, please. This is what it could look like. This is a sister house on North Clark Street, the White House, one of the oldest homes in Milledgeville. It's actually very similar architecture, and I just wanted to see what could be done with this house. You've seen Richard's work all over town. You know that his restoration work is impeccable, both inside and outside. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. I would just ask you to take a look at the remainder of the slides in the packet, and we have a representative from the GMC Foundation to speak next. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Mr. David Grant.
My name's David Grant. I'm 1645 Stonemetal Road, Milledgeville, chairman of the GMC Foundation. We bought this house because it was, had some folks in there, you know, right across, right across from the school, and had folks in there that were not desirable to be around young children. And so we really didn't, not interested in tearing the house down or anything like that. The whole thing was just to protect the kids. And then we got into it and started looking at it and saw the trouble that was, you know, gonna be with it, so we asked to either tear it down or move it. And we were turned down for that, you know, to do that. So we've waited, we had to wait a year to come back, and we were, you know, thinking about doing that, but we're not in a big hurry with it, but we would like to be good stewards of the property. We're not interested in fixing it up. We would like to, for somebody to move it and, you know, fix it, fix it back up. Richard Sims has done a wonderful job with the things that he's done in the downtown area. I don't think, I don't think anybody could disagree with that. And so we went to Richard because he was the best person that I could think of to do this job. So that's where we are. We, I told him I'd sell it to him for 10 bucks, and I'll give him the 10 bucks. Best I can do, best offer I could make, you know. So entertain any questions anybody might have about it.
When you're moving it, it appears to be on the foundation. I'm assuming the foundation would remain. The steps, it'd be scooped out from up under it, that bottom floor? That all seems to be cement and everything?
Yeah, it would have to be.
Yep.
That's correct. The wooden part of the house would be moved, the foundation would be demoed, and then there's already a foundation existing at 301 South Liberty. That would be restored, and this house would be set up.
Put on it, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, for your presentation.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Next person up to speak is Grace, I'll make sure I'm putting Grace King.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Grace King, and I'm here representing the public policymaking undergraduate course at Georgia College. This semester, my classmates and I, along with Dr. Harlemann and Dan Lavery of the Georgia College Foundation authored a draft public art ordinance for the city of Milledgeville. We drafted the ordinance after reviewing ordinance passed by other municipalities in Georgia corresponding with seven leaders in our community. Public art ordinance are policies that establish a process for community members to approve proposed public art installations. Milledgeville has an excellent opportunity to adopt a public art ordinance to improve its aesthetic, economic, and cultural value. In a report containing the ordinance that we have emailed to each city council member, the mayor, and the city manager, we documented that public art has created several benefits in other communities in Georgia where it has been installed, such as those related to tourism, economic development, and social cohesion, equity, and inclusivity. However, prevailing public policies prohibit murals, the most prevalent form of public art, on any building in our 10-block historic district. We are excited to present to our draft ordinance for consideration for adoption. Importantly, the ordinance does not commit any taxpayer dollars towards the installation of public art. Instead, it establishes a process for community members to apply to install public art using private or nonprofit funding. The draft ordinance complies with all relevant laws and promotes the well-being and safety of residents and our visitors. A key aspect of the ordinance is that it prevents applicants from needing overlapping permits from other commissions when proposing and installing public art. The primary action of our proposed public art ordinance is to create a new commission under the city of Milledgeville called the Milledgeville Public Arts Board, which will approve applicants for public art from the community members that is in the best interest of all residents of our community and its visitors. This approach has been adopted by several communities in Georgia as a solution for increasing the prevalence of public art. We look forward to working with you and on the effort to pass a public art ordinance in the new year, when we will be willing to provide a more formal presentation on the proposed ordinance and plan for its implementation. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, just to let you know, we do plan to have them on the agenda for January night, I believe is the date, for the first meeting in January, for a more lengthy presentation.
So that concludes our public input for tonight. Thank you all for coming and addressing the council. At this time, let me, before I go any further, recognize our state representative. We have State Representative Ken Vance here with us tonight, and we have our state Senator Rick Williams here with us tonight.
Merry Christmas, all.
Thank you. Did you all want any comments? I'll forego my comments if you have some. Did you, do you have any comments? I'll forego mine if you have some comments you wanna make.
We won't put the clock on y'all. Possibly not. You've never been in a room with Ken, Ken then evidently, so.
All right, thank you. So at this time, you all have received a copy of the November 28, 2023 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? There being none, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The November 28 council meeting minutes are approved. I really don't have a whole lot of comments to make tonight. I wanna commend Mr. Griffith and everyone else that helped make the tree lighting ceremony a success. And if you all have noticed the decorations, we are really lit up in lights this year. They're beautiful. If you haven't, take the time to just drive through and look at them. I realized after we had lit the tree that, oh, the barks of the trees are lit, and they were making like a palm tree type look, so it's very beautiful. Thank you, Mr. Griffin, to you and your team. Other than that, I don't have any other comments tonight. So at this time, I would like to acknowledge the convention and visitor bureau executive director, Ms. Rebecca Snyder, to give us an update on their activities. Ms. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for having us here this evening. We appreciate it. We look forward to being able to do this with you each year. As you all know, uh-oh, got a little over excited with my clicking, sorry. As you all know, we have served as your community partner since the 1980s, so we are going on more than 40 years of partnership with the city of Milledgeville, and we are very grateful for that. We are the entity that receives a portion of the occupancy tax funds here in Milledgeville, and in accordance with Georgia legislature mandates, we spend that on the promotion and marketing of Milledgeville, as well as procuring travel to this area. So just, I wanted to start this evening by giving you a quick update about how we are doing, and I am so proud to be able to say we have had our best year ever in Milledgeville. In fact, our hospitality industry had an $83 million economic impact in the last year, and with that, we see that more than 1 million people traveled to visit Baldwin County in 2023. And we partner with different research firms so that we can better understand all the time who really our visitors are, where they're coming from, when they're coming. And we recognize that our largest market share is really in fall. We see 40% of our travelers in the fall season, and you can see from the graph in front of you just how much more significant that period is than our other seasons. So we actively work, of course, to continue to inspire fall travel, but we're constantly diligently working to help our other segments rise and make sure that their seasonality is good as well. And this year, we had record-breaking hotel performance. Now, I have been so fortunate to be able to say that the last two years, and I think we all remember what 2020 was like for our lodging partners. But really, when we look at our lodging footprint, here in town, we see that both average occupancy, as well as the daily rate that visitors are charged when they come in, are both increased, and increased significantly over 2019, which 2019 was our best year ever. So we have only a good news story when it comes to what's happening locally for hospitality. We're pleased to say that business investment remains strong across different market segments, whether it's attraction development, lodging development, or retail, food and beverage, we're seeing continued investment and growth, which we think is a great economic indicator for the future. In fact, as we look at our future outlook, I wanted to go ahead and share with you a few things that we know we are looking forward to for 2024. And one of the things that we're doing in first quarter is a lodging feasibility study. Our market has grown so significantly over the last couple of years. We are now displacing hotel nights into other communities, and we want to be able to stop that. We want them to stay here. We want them to have that economic impact here in our community. So as our office assessed what the best next step might be forward, we realized it was really understanding how many more rooms this market could hold. So as we receive that study in first quarter, we will share that with you all. We also are working in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, of course, you all, as the city, and Baldwin County, to move forward next year with some grant funding that the chamber received on some wayfinding and gateway signage. We are expecting in second quarter to be able to get a look at what that might cost us. We've hired a consulting firm to come in and talk with us about really what's, where signage needs placed. They're the experts, we are not. Where signage needs placed and what that cost may be, so that we can make sure that for both our residents as well as our visitors, it's the best experience possible in this community. And then our board is excited to announce that in third quarter of next year, we are gonna launch a tourism improvement grant program. We are very proud, and I'll talk about it a little bit more, but we're very proud to say that we have made the trolley not only successful, but we have made it a revenue generator. And our goal in revenue generation was really to create a way to re-gift that money into our own industry, into our community. So next year, we'll launch a grant program that will allow people that wanna make tourism improvements to come to our office and apply for that revenue generation. So just a quick look at kind of, a quick look at what we're seeing when it comes to our marketing efforts, because that's a huge part of what our staff does, marketing and public relations. We have over 300,000 people that come onto the Visit Milledgeville website each year. We are inspiring travel all year long, and we're seeing tremendous growth in both our Facebook and Instagram accounts. So we know that we are out there building daily a positive image for Milledgeville. And with that, our advertising campaign is significant. We really are looking not only to make sure that our largest travel market, which is Atlanta, continues coming into our community, but we're looking to really expand our name recognition, our brand presence across the southeast. So you'll see here just a collection of the publications that we market to each year. And we're heavily targeting things like Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, the southeast in general, because those markets have been really good for us in the fact that they stay longer and they spend more, which are both things we like when we're looking at the overall economic impact in our community. I wanted to give you guys a few samples of some of the brand work that we do. We have, coming out of COVID, really leaned into the small-town marketing tactic, and that has performed very, very well for us. Being a charming, small town, people are really interested in coming to this community. So we have partnered with media, travel influencers, as well as digital advertising and print advertising, to continue to bring that affluent demographic here. We also have leaned very heavily into recreation, and that includes the Oconee River Greenway, as well as Lake Sinclair. And we're seeing that that has been incredibly popular, especially during the summertime. Our best two months of the year are October, and then July is our second-best month of the year. So we know people are coming in, whether it's fishing tournaments or leisure travelers on the lake. And then we also have worked to really connect with our locally-owned businesses. We think that's such a part of what makes things so special in Milledgeville. As much as I love Longhorn, just like anyone, but as much as I enjoy that, you know, there's just something about going somewhere where somebody has chosen to personally invest in a community and open up a business. And we really see, whether it's Morning Grind or Avanti's, you know, thousands of people read both of the pieces that we created on our website. Whenever we're serving up things about our local businesses, it performs very well. We know people are interested in that type of content, and we love being able to support people that have invested here locally. A huge standout partnership for us this year was Milledgeville Burger Week. If you didn't have a chance to participate this year, I hope you'll participate with us next year. We launched it in 2022, and it was very successful, but this year, we had more than 5,000 hamburgers that were sold. And we knew for every $1 we invested in promoting the event, $20 returned to our local restaurant community, and we felt like that was such a tremendous win. People were really excited about this event, and it excited us to see how happy they were to see something come in the food and beverage space. So this will definitely be back next year, might be even a little bit longer, 'cause we want people to get as many hamburgers in as possible. But it's been a great event, a great collaboration, that's right, a great collaboration with our friends at Milledgeville Main Street. It's been a win all around. When it comes to public relations, we've had a great year. We had over 40 articles earned this year. So essentially, less than every 10 days, we're earning a public relations story for Milledgeville. I think that's pretty positive, and it's everything from focus on what a great travel destination we are, to people wanting to fish on the lakes, to, you know, Flannery O'Connor. It is across the board when it comes to the type of publicity we receive and earn. And we're really grateful for our media partners, because as much as we tell people it's wonderful to come here, it always helps when somebody else is singing that same story with us. So as we look towards next year, we are looking for a refreshed advertising campaign that will be out in first quarter of 2024. We are collaborating with our first public relations firm ever, and they have guaranteed us five travel journalists that will come into Milledgeville next year to cover the community as a destination. We also are looking to lean hard into videography. It's so popular, especially on social channels, and we wanna be able to bring our story as a community to people on that platform as well. And then we also are really excited to launch some new content that's gonna be focused on relocation. This has been a desire of mine for a couple of years, and we've just, you know, time and priorities have kept kind of pushing it off, but we are gonna commit to that for next year and offer that relocation information. And then on the sales and servicing side, we are proud to say that we've welcomed 10,000 people into the Welcome Center this year. We have had over 5,000 people that have taken the trolley tour, and this year has been the first year that's felt normal since COVID when it comes to the trolley and to group tour. And we're really glad to be able to say we welcomed more than 50 group tours into our market this year, which resulted in more than $7,000 that we paid out to our attraction partners through our partnerships. We also expanded programming. We brought the trolley back an additional day. We launched quarterly children's programs. And then, of course, in conjunction with the First Friday and the tree lighting, we have the Grinch at the Welcome Center, but this year, we added on Cindy Lou Who and did a storytime on that Saturday, and that was very popular. And, you know, most of the time, we see a lot of adult faces in the visitor center, so it's always nice and sweet to hear those children. And then when it comes to self-guided support, we launched a self-guided ghost tour, as well as a Flannery O'Connor self-guided tour. We are stepping into the space of wedding sales and services. We recognize that that is a great space for us to eat up weekends for our hotel partners, and we have a lot of really fantastic event facilities. We did a survey with them and recognized that a lot of them don't necessarily have the money to market on their own, so we're coming alongside them in collaboration to help offer them some support there, so that we can draw more and more weddings into this community. And then we launched this year a meeting sports and event grant fund, and you'll see, again, from the money that we generated from the trolley, we set aside $20,000 this year to help secure overnights that come into our community. To apply for this, you have to have a function that brings at least 25 hotel room nights. And you'll see that the grant funds that we set aside accounted for more than 700 rooms brought to market this year, which equated to $85,000 in lodging revenues. So we are trying to do it in a logical way, where we're making it make sense. We wanna give back and lure people here, but we want it to make sense with the amount of room nights they book. So you'll see, we had everything from just 25 room nights to a total market sellout. And then as we look to 2024, I'm so excited to say, in first quarter, we are gonna hire back our sales manager position. That position, we decided to dissolve that position in 2020, just because the business unfortunately wasn't there, but it's time to bring it back. We're really busy, and we're so glad to see that. We also are gonna launch more and more wedding industry sales support initiatives. We're gonna go to trade shows. We want all of these sweet Georgia college alum to continue to come back here and get married in this community. We're also gonna look at our film industry inventory. Things are always changing in that space, and with the film industry being on strike, we've seen a lot more independent film that's hit the market this year, a lot of smaller projects. So we're also gonna look at a permit review to understand how do we work with somebody that's bringing 15 people versus somebody like a Netflix who would bring 300 people, and understanding what that might look like. And then we're also gonna do a sports market inventory, because between our collegiate spaces, the Greenway, the lake, we think we have a real opportunity when it comes to the sports market and luring people here through that means. So just kind of a quick outlook of what we have coming up in 2024, as well as what we worked on in 2023. I couldn't resist, I had to add some beautiful Christmas photos here at the end, 'cause our town, Madam Mayor, to your point, our town does look so beautiful right now. And if you haven't had a chance, I hope you'll get out to Lockerly and Lights. That was our new attraction for the holiday season, and they did a spectacular job. It's really beautiful out there. My final piece of business is gifting you all our 2023 ornament. It is the Payne Jones House, which sits on the corner of Liberty Street and Green Street, and she was over 200 years old three years ago, so we're looking at 203 years old. So Merry Christmas to you all, and again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you each year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca.
And thank you for our gift. And yes, the lockerie was really nice, the hot chocolate and the samours, and we really enjoyed that. Thank you.
Thank you. This must be a real big one.
This must be a real big one. Before I turn it over to you, Mr. Griffith, I see Ms. Tobar. I can't think of your first name, so I'm going to say Ms. Tobar. Rest Rebecca Tobar, who is officially the Executive Director, correct, at Allied Arts? And I would like for you to come up and just say a few words for us.
Thank you so much. Milledgeville is such a beautiful city, and I am excited to be a part of Allied Arts. And I will tell you, my heart's desire is that Allied Arts is just a part of all the wonderful things that Milledgeville has to offer the community and tourists. And I want to say thank you for the support that the city gives to Allied Arts, and thank you to all of you for all the work that you do for Milledgeville. It's a lot, and it's not always a thankful position. And just thank you for everything.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so at this point, Mr. Griffith, are you ready?
I am. And I'll check my first one off my list, was to introduce Rebecca Tobar.
I just saw, and I might...
Good.
I think I'm taking my box and going home.
Yeah, Mr. Chambers was talking about putting the clock on Representative Vance. I'm glad y'all never put the clock on me.
That's a good idea.
I am going to be pretty brief tonight, because most, all of you know that I worked from home last night and my gas, yesterday, and my gas is about to run out today. So I just want to cover a couple of things dealing with our meeting tonight and then share a couple of other pieces of information with you. Of course, you have before you ordinance O-2312-16, which Mr. Reynolds is offering up tonight as an amendment to Chapter 6, Section 155A of the city's Code of Ordinances on Alcohol, dealing with New Year's Eve following, falling on Sundays. So you have a copy of that ordinance in the book. And Mr. Reynolds, I'm sure will share some more information with you about that when the question is called. Just keep in mind, it isn't ordinance. So if we don't want to have a second read, we'll need to suspend those rules so that it can be approved tonight. Secondly, the Language Access Plan for the Housing and Urban Development Department in conjunction with the Community Development Block Grant Funds for limited English-speaking persons. You all are more than welcome to read those pages if you like. I will just simply say it is one of those things that the federal government makes us pass if we're going to accept the Community Development Block Grant. And I think we probably are all going to accept that. So we will make sure that that piece is passed on to our CDBG consultants to make sure it's in the packet so that when the time comes for the auditing of completion of that program, it will be in the files. Resolution 231251, we will need to purchase new radios and communication systems for both the Police Department and the Fire Department for a couple of reasons. One is because of some upgrades that were made on the county's communication system. As you all know, they dispatch our Fire Department, and they are the ring-down service for sending law enforcement calls to our dispatchers. And we need to upgrade these radios and this communication equipment in order to be able to be compatible with them. Additionally, the equipment that we have is just simply ending its life in terms of the availability of warranty work and being able to get parts for it. But just so you know, in case you didn't add it up with what I sent you in the report last week, it is a total of $747,917.80. And that's after a $47,000 trade-in allowance. So that gave us big money for the radios that we're going to get back compared to what we're spending. But the one thing that this does have that we have not had on this equipment in the past is this does have an extended three-year warranty to go along with the one-year warranty. So there will be a four-year, 100% warranty on the equipment going forward for the next four years. And that's really important for all these radios, but it's really important for the Fire Department radios. These radios that we're purchasing are built for them, are built specifically for the fire service to withstand the heat and the wet of firefighting. And so I feel good about what we're getting. Additionally, there is some, there are some features that will give law enforcement the opportunity to be able to interface with some of the flock cameras that are in the community and also for the Fire Department that will be utilized as an additional to the life safety measures of the past devices so that if someone gets lost in a fire, they can be more quickly found. So I'm pleased with the equipment that we're getting. I'm just, I'm not pleased for what it costs, but it is what it is. And I'm hoping that these will last a good 10 to 12 years over the course of the future, with four of those years being under warranty. You have Resolution 231252, which is a resolution to approve the latest alcohol license renewals. As of this list, we only have three renewals that have not met their requirements at this point in time. That is Sedexo, which I don't think they're really real concerned about serving past midnight on New Year's Eve, because they're catering and they're looking towards January already. Family Dollar on Robertson Mill Road, which has package to go, and Family Corner on 191 West Andrews Street. That facility is changing ownership, and they have not passed their inspection yet for that change of ownership and the new license application. So I'm recommending to you that we not have another meeting, a special meeting to approve these three alcohol licenses this year, and we will just make sure that they are not selling past midnight on December 31st until they get done what they need to do. The last one is, just to give you a little more information on Resolution 231254, which is a resolution to accept a loan from the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority. This is to assist us in the federal lead and copper rule. If you remember, in July, you all approved a contract with 120 Water, which is the first step in the process that we have to go through in order to do what's necessary and required by federal EPD and state EP, excuse me, federal EPA and state EPD to meet the requirements of the revised lead and copper rule. We actually applied for G-Fa loan in the amount of $1,250,000. And we're awarded $426,750, which is one of the larger awards around the state for this project, by the way. And the really good thing about it is they call it a loan. And the reason they call it a loan is because they say that you will be forgiven the debt service in accordance with appropriations language, and that language is basically says that you spend all the money. If you don't spend all the money, if you only spend part of it, then you have to pay it all back. Well, you can rest assured, that ain't going to be a problem for Milledgeville. We're going to spend all the money. So we fully anticipate this will be a countable loan, and we will not have to pay any of that money, money back. And it's going to be very helpful in what we, what we have to do. We actually are looking at another G-Fa application in order to give us some additional funds to, to help with this. We don't think we're going to have many lines that have to be replaced. But keep in mind, what the lead and copper rule says is even if this, even if it's a lead or copper line between the meter and the house, we have to replace that line as well, as opposed to what typically is just considered between the road and the meter as hours. So we don't think we're going to have many to replace, but we're just, we're just planning for that. The only, the only thing that I will share with you that I don't think I've shared with you in previous reports before this meeting is, last week, we cut the check to the Georgia Department of Transportation. If you remember, you all approved a resolution asking for utility movement assistance for the South Wayne Street Bridge Replacement Project, which is the bridge just below Piggly Wiggly. They sent us the invoice for that. So we have paid GDOT the $700,000 that's necessary for that. So when that project happens, that contractor will be moving our water and sewer lines as necessary throughout that project. So that's, that's a pretty, pretty big financial lick, but we have, we have taken care of that. And we do have the funds in some splosh proceeds to be able to do what we need to do for the radios. So we will be able to handle that expense as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll move to old business. And with that, to a public hearing to consider ordinance O-2310-14 that would amend the Land Development Code to allow special use at 600 South Wayne Street for a car lot. I'm sorry, car, car lot.
With accessory car wash.
With accessory to a car wash. It just says use car lot. This one, the procedure for conducting the hearing to amend the Land Development Code will be as follows. Once it has been determined that this public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code. We will then hear a report from Planning and Zoning Director, including the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Counsel will first hear from applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal. But the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issue raised by the opposition. We will then give the opposition the opportunity to speak in rebuttal. They too must limit comments to the points or issues raised. Please make sure that before you speak, that you give your name and address for the record. Mr. Clerk, has this public here been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has.
I will ask the clerk to please read ordinance O-2310-14 by caption.
Ordinance O-2310-14. An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Milledgeville, Georgia. The ordinance grants a special use for a used car lot with 20 vehicles and accessory car wash located at 600 South Wayne Street.
All right, I will recognize the zoning administrator for her report. Ms. Sandra, if you will, come forth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is concerning, as was stated, property located at 600 South Wayne Street. It is currently zoned community commercial. The owner, Mr. Allen, is desiring a special use for a used car lot with a maximum of 20 cars and an accessory car wash, which he will explain what that would mean. When he told us in our meeting, now, P&amp;Z, it's just a bucket in the hooze that he's going to use. That he's going to use to wash off the cars. But at the planning and zoning board meeting that we held, the board unanimously voted to approve this request. So if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to entertain them. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandra.
All right, I will remind anyone who wishes to speak to come to the podium and state your name and address for the records. Is there anyone present? Oh.
I'm Joel Allen, 243 Cooper's Road. And so I'm the owner of 600 South Wayne Street. We just humbly request that this council would consider the rezoning of this lot for the use of a used car dealership, would not exceed the 20-car maximum. And it's already been approved as a dealership in May 26 of 2015. So we're just hoping, due to this precedent, already said that we could be approved again also. Sabuncy Mazain, that's, he will be the owner and operator of it. And we together pledged, you know, to take care of it, the upkeep and appearance of this property and to abide by any instructions that the city council would have for us. He's a very hard worker. He worked for me for eight years, so I can attest his character. And that's pretty much it. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this? We just hear that. I'm sorry. Get it here. All right, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Are there any questions or comments from counsel?
I just have one question. It's not a car wash. When y'all say bucket, you just washed the car with a bucket. That's the closest thing to the wash, right?
All right, this concludes the presentation of evidence in the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move, we approve.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden? Ms. Map? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
That concludes the public hearing and items under old business. We can now move to new business and ask the clerk to read ordinance O-2312-16 by caption as a first reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 6, Section 185 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milledgeville regarding alcoholic beverages to allow for sale of alcoholic beverages outside of regulated hours when certain holiday, holidays occur on Sundays.
Is there, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion about suspending the rule?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we suspend the rules to allow for passage and adoption.
So I can...
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden? Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The rules are suspended. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Glad to see this as an ordinance, as opposed to us every few years having to bring it up as a resolution.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden? Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. I'll ask the clerk...
Can I make a comment?
Well, we've already adopted it.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't want to change anything.
Okay.
I just need to say that... I just want to say my reasoning and the reason why I'm saying no is because I'm having to deal with children, and I try to talk to the children, ask them not to drink. And I don't want to speak too much, because some things that are spoken to me about are in confidence. So I have to be a role model, and I have to set an example for the children. So that's it.
Understood.
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
I will ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2312-49 by caption.
A resolution... A resolution authorized a limited maintenance agreement with Syntec Systems Incorporated to extend the warranty on the city's Fuel Master Fuel Management System.
All right, you have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. I will ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2312-50 by caption.
A resolution to adopt the Language Access Plan, LAP, in accordance with Title VI of the Non-Discrimination Laws so as to provide access to services by federal agencies to limited English-speaking persons, LEP, in conjunction with receiving and administering the Department of Community Affairs Block Grant.
And you have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. I will ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2312-51 by caption.
A resolution authorized the purchase of Motorola radios for the Milledgeville Police Department and the Milledgeville Fire Rescue.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I looked at it. Still last 10 years, that's only about $75,000 a year, and it still didn't make me feel any better.
You taking all that in, aren't you parts? We have our Motorola rep with us tonight.
Mr. Griffin, you did say that we-
We're looking for 15 maybe.
We paying for it with the splosh money, right? And we have it. Okay.
I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
I would like to note that this is painful.
This is what?
Painful.
Y'all know as tight as your city manager is, it's really painful.
You produce an excellent product. Definitely.
And you guarantee them for four years, right?
I'll ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2312-52 by caption.
A resolution approved alcohol license renewal applications as set forth on the attached Exhibit A for the calendar year 2024.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Question. Does this cover? Are we covered or will we have to come back?
It covers all, but those three that I just mentioned to you. If you all cancel the meeting on December 26, I don't think we should come back, but that's y'all's call.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
I think that may be the first time since I've been employed by the city. Since I've been elected.
Since I've known.
As long as you've been where you are. Well, you know, when you start in July, you can usually get everybody up to speed by the end of the year, so.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
I had to say aye on this one.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. I will ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2312-53 by caption.
To cancel the December 26, 2023 regularly scheduled council meeting due to the designated Christmas holiday.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. I will ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2312-54 by caption.
A resolution authorized a loan agreement with the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority to accept funds from the Drinking Water State Revolving Funds to remove the lead inventory from the water treatment and distribution system.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. We have three new license... We have three new alcohol license applications to consider tonight. And I will ask the clerk to present the license for Milli Food Mart.
So this is for Sweetie Patel on behalf of Vahanvati, Vahanvati 99 LLC, doing business as Milli Food Mart, located at 610 North Jefferson Street. And it is for beer and wine retail package to go.
You have heard the application. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee? Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
License is approved. I will ask the clerk to present the license for Ruby Tuesday.
This is for Greer Smith on behalf of Ruby Tuesday Operations LLC, doing business as Ruby Tuesday Number 4661, located at 2440 North Flambia Street. And it's for beer and wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises.
You have heard the application. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, why is this not a renewal? Is it a change in ownership? Do you know?
That's correct.
Is it changing ownership? Hmm, it's interesting. Management, oh, okay.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
License is approved. I will ask clerk to present the license for Stop and Go.
This is Jamie, for Jamie Guzman on behalf of Jamie 23 Incorporated, doing business as Stop and Go, located at 1441 Vincent Highway. And it's for beer and wine retail package to go.
You have heard the application. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Beer and wine package to go and then catering? I'm confused.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. And alcoholic beverage catering license, that's correct. So it's for beer, wine retail package to go, and catering.
That way they can provide beer and wine for private parties.
For private parties, okay. All right.
Provided they get approval by the State Department of Revenue.
We don't usually have these, so that's why I call it a not when it's paid. Not when it's paid, it's to go.
And it's only $100?
Yeah, that should be a whole lot more because they're gonna make a schedule.
Just mention your name. I'll be mentioning that before we leave tonight.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Call the roll.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The license is-
And I'm actually gonna check that. I'm thinking they may have put the application fee in the wrong place on that license application.
Yeah, that's what's throwing me off on that. It's throwing me off.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
It's throwing me off, yeah.
No, but it's still $100, though.
Yeah, still not enough.
I'm telling you, that's one time only.
But this is being approved as is. All right, the license is approved. We have three appointments to consider. The first is to reappoint Dr. Norrie's Price to the Development Authority. And I will make that in the form of a nomination. Is there a motion to confirm the nomination?
So moved.
Second.
I'll ask, is there any discussion, sorry? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
What's the... Next, we have two new appointments. Wait a minute. Next, we have two new appointments to the Allied Arts Board. Firstly, I nominate Jessica Whitehead to fill the unexpired term of Jeanette Waddell, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to confirm? So moved.
Second.
I'll ask clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
So Ms. Jessica Whitehead is appointed to the Allied Arts Board. I nominate Latrina Howell for appointment to the Allied Arts Board to fill the unexpired term of Sandra Jones. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
So moved.
Second.
Proper motion and second, Latrina Howell is appointed to the Allied Arts Board. Did I miss something? I need clerk... I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Yeah, Ms. Latrina Howell is appointed to the Allied Arts Board. Is there a need for closed session this evening? No? All right, this concludes the items on the agenda. Does anyone on council have any announcements or comments?
I have some comments. I attended the Children's and Youth Advisory, Count GMA's Children and Youth Advisory Council. And one of the things that we are in deep discussion about is how to keep our children and youth safe and how to provide some type of municipal or county ways to keep our children busy within our region and our area. They asked us to bring back ideas when we meet in January at GMA. If there are any ideas that any city has or any best practices that cities have come up with that can be used and shared with the group throughout the state. To, everybody is kind of dealing with the same problems and same issues within their communities that our children and youth really, other than going to school and being involved in recreation sports. They feel like there's a need to keep them busy and keep them doing things so that we won't lose so many of them. So if you all have any ideas that you'd like to share with me or something that I can take back to the council when we meet at GMA in January, I would appreciate it. The other thing I have to report is I also attended the Middle Georgia Regional Stakeholders Planning Meeting last week in making, and the four areas of discussion as far as, what we're doing is putting together the regional plan for this area and the areas of concern of economic development, transportation, education, and aging services. And within those four topics, you can cover a multitude of other topics that concern the region. One of the things that Hank and I have been talking about and one of the things that we discussed was, I really didn't say a whole lot about Milledgeville, although I spoke with the guy separately after the meeting, is they brought it up, the need for an inland port. And Middle Georgia is planning on vying for that inland port to be somewhere within our region. And, you know, just where, you know, whoever has enough land, enough space, and a rail system available is what they're looking for. So you have to have all of those three things to put together in a package. But, you know, one of the things that we talked about a lot was the fact that the state has been real strategic about getting jobs and getting industry and getting things to critical areas within our district. But then some of us have been left out. That is Baldwin County, Wilkinson County, Tweaks County, Jones County, some for, as far as manufacturing and things like that. And even Warner Robins was crying. I was surprised that there's so much going on in Houston County, but not really in Warner Robins. And except the base, you know, they have all the things going on with the base, but they were saying that within the city itself, they don't have very much. So we are really trying to get them to take a look at something that can be done. One of the things that they talked about was whenever the completion of the four-lane in the 441, hopefully with the new auto plant that's going up in, not Monroe County. You know where I'm talking about, Morgan County and up in that area. With the completion of the auto plant, that that would be one of the things that a lot... They're counting on a lot of that coming back down I-20 and then coming down 441 and heading out to the port. So the key would be to take advantage of that and see if we can pull some type of manufacturing in that would go in conjunction with that inside of Baldwin County. But here we need to start looking at available land and what we can do with that. So that was one of the things that we talked about a lot, course, transportation. And they were talking about still the need to get a... We are one of the few regions that do not have a transportation, regional transportation tax. But right now with all of the individual counties passing transportation tax, they don't see where we're going to be able to ever get a regional transportation tax added on because it's gonna turn out that if you push the regional tax, then a lot of us may end up losing the loss of the splosh. And none of us at this point can afford to lose that out of our budgets because it, you know, there's such a need for that. So trying to think of ways that we can come up with to be able to... So trying to think of ways that we can come up with to be able to get that out and maybe get some corporations or somebody to market that as being important for this region, but don't know about that one. Of course, with education, we know there's so many areas we could go into with that. And then, of course, one of the key things in this area are aging services because they gave us some information about population in this area. And surprisingly enough, zero, ages zero to five has been the largest number that has decreased in the last ten years and you wouldn't think that. So that means that that's not enough people having babies. That's what's going on with that, but our aging, our aging population has increased tremendously in the Middle Georgia area. So that, that, you know, because of that, one of the things that they talked about a lot and when I listened to the gentleman talking about moving the house, and I thought about how many times I've asked Richard Sims to consider providing residential space for our aging population. So many of the cities said that that was one of the things that they had started doing. And there were people from, you know, from Henry County, I mean, just from all over the state and within our region at that stakeholders' meeting, and they talked about the fact that they had brought elderly people into their downtowns which improved their downtown areas tremendously.
Makes sense. Makes a lot of sense.
Makes a difference.
Yeah. Have walkability.
Right, to be able to walk somewhere and, and get something to eat without having to get in their car and drive. And then I had one lady to come up to me and talk about the horrors of four-forty-one when she comes to stay at her lake house here and she and her husband and some of their friends just, you know, that's, that's just one of-
Hillary scares us, too.
Talk about how scary it is for them now to come to eat up there on four-forty-one because, and they, they wish that we had somewhere that they could stay, that they could walk and get something to eat. So that's, that's something to think about, but one of those meetings will, for the, before we come up with a regional plan, will be held here in Baldwin County. There is nobody from Baldwin County, just myself, that attended that meeting, but hopefully some of you all can attend some of the next.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You'll let us, let us know.
Okay, I will.
I'm starting to know why our representative slipped out a while ago.
Yeah, they didn't want us to get, we need money.
We could have hit them up for some things.
Well, I, I think Ms. Denise, Ms. Denise is really being busy and she's taking in and like a sponge, she's absorbing so much of what's going on around us and that's what it takes to be an effective council is that we got to get involved, we got to get out in here and see what's coming down the pipeline so that we'll be in position or put ourselves in better positions to start to apply and be ready when grant opportunities come down the pipeline. So thank you, Ms. Shinholster, for being available and usable at this time. Other than that, if there being nothing else on the-
There, I have one question that I left out of my report, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I need to schedule a work session, call work session with you all where I have some time, some longer time to discuss some items with you all. And at least one of them will involve bringing in a guest speaker. So I wanted to know if, if a call work session at five-thirty on January sixteenth works for everyone and if so, we'll go ahead and get that announcement done and I can secure the speaker that I'd like to have come in.
What was the date?
Sixteenth.
At what time, I'm sorry?
Five-thirty. It'd be the time of a regular meeting, we just might be here till about eight or so, so. I'd like to have opportunity.
January the sixteenth.
January sixteenth. As a matter of fact, we will, if, we will, we will have dinner as part of the meeting, so.
I won't be here, I'll be going to DC.
Okay.
I'll leave at sixteen. Okay, I mean, I should be done, got in my room by that time, huh? If you want me to be available by phone.
Yeah, we, we can, I'll, I'll see if we can work through that. I mean, this, this, I was trying to do it on a regular meeting night as opposed to a Saturday, mainly because we have a guest speaker coming and two because I hate for everybody to have to give up their Saturday.
You have a Zoom capability, too.
We can hook up Zoom capability as well, yes, ma'am. All right, so if that works for everybody, including the mayor zooming in, we will schedule that for the sixteenth at five-thirty.
Tomorrow we have risk management and then we have the pension committee.
Tomorrow we have risk management at nine a.m. and the pension committee at ten.
Okay.
Nine a.m. and ten.
Nine in the morning is risk management and ten is the pension committee.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor.
I know we'll see each other before the really happy, happy holiday season gets going, it's, it's going and it's off to a good start and I'm really pleased to see the direction that we have moved in and still moving in as far as trying to be open and honest and transparent to people. And Dr. Lee, I appreciate your comment because, trust me, I got the same calls. So I appreciate your comment there. If there be nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.